All right, I'm gonna ask the city clerk to please call the roll as we formally begin today's meeting.
Councilwoman Gallego.
Here.
Councilman Noakowski. Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilman Waring. Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pastore.
Here.
Mayor Stanton.
Here, so we do have a quorum present. Ms. Garcia, our interpreter, please introduce yourself to the audience.
Mi nombre es Maria Elena Garcia. Soy intérprete del idioma español. Si aquellos que necesiten ayuda a los servicios de interpretación a cualquier momento durante esta sesión, por favor me lo dejas a mer a mí o a la secretaria municipal. Gracias.
Thank you so very much. Next on our agenda is citizen comments. Citizens have up to three minutes to present to the city council on non-agendized topics. The first speaker is Mr. Leonard Clark. Mr. Clark, please come forward. He'll be followed by Diane Barker. Did a member of the city council just join the meeting?
Yes, it's now.
Councilman DeCecio, thank you. All right, Leonard Clark, please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Leonard Clark. We're going right down the street at Good Samaritan Hospital. I want to begin this by, as a citizen of Phoenix, the fifth largest city in the United States of America, by extending, I know a lot of my friends are with me on my social media and that I know personally in the neighborhood, when we extend our hopes and prayers to the beautiful people of Mexico and the horrible earthquake that they just suffered. And I'm hoping that the mayor, because I know the mayor and other councilmembers have connections, as many of us do, to the beautiful people of Mexico, that maybe we could offer some type of assistance as we did in Florida and Texas. I also want to thank and congratulate our brothers and sisters in the LGBTQ community for the recent, just yesterday or several days ago, the Arizona State Supreme Court, making sure they have the same rights as opposite sex couples. Now, I want to show you some concerns I have. One, I went to the Human Relations Commission, maybe it was posted, maybe it wasn't, that said, "No quorum present." The Human Relations Commission of Phoenix, we were to speak on a non-police oversight review board. There was other controversial things already spoken of, the 15 suggestions by citizens of the CPTI, the Community Policing Trust Initiative, so suddenly, no quorum. Now, I know that there'll be given excuses and reasons given that suddenly they didn't want to meet. That concerns me. My other concern, another concern, is Motel 6. I have not heard one of you, Motel 6, shamefully, and you can sue me, Motel 6, take a number, because this is the city I live in, and I'm ashamed of the fact that you, that they were giving out lists to immigration of our immigrant brothers and sisters deporting at least 20 families, but I haven't heard a peep, not from you, Mayor Stanton, you put on your Twitter, the mayor puts on his Twitter, "Happy Mexican Independence Day." Where have I seen anything? Now, hopefully you'll correct me, Laura Pastore, Vice Mayor, all of you. Not one peep. I went down the street, five minutes, not from where I stand. The Democratic Progressive Caucus is there. Boycott, you know, Motel 6. Nothing. Now, I don't know if it's because you're worried about a lawsuit. My other concern is, Phoenix New Times, a reporter on KJazz.org, stated on an interview on the show last Friday, that he asked the Phoenix Police if they do this as well, get lists. The Phoenix Police Information Officer said, "Well, we do it on, quote, 'an ad hoc,' end quote, basis." I'm sorry, but the, many of the people, a certain segment of this community, I believe there are good officers out there, that's why we're doing this, but a certain segment of the community is concerned, we can't trust what the, what's coming out of the city council because you refuse to have an independent investigation of what took place August 22nd. You initially stated, "No plastic or foam bullets were used." A reporter went out and found that. So that, that was one of my other concerns. There's so many other things. You're lucky I don't have my card, so I guess it was, you know, destiny for you, serendipity. But I just ask also as well, that Mayor Stanton, if you do plan to leave the city council, you know, I asked, at first, I was over at Pia Stewa Peak, and yes, I've been told by your office that they're taking down the signs, they haven't got them in yet, but there's one big sign with Pia Stewa Road out on Glendale, but you go in the neighborhood, all of those signs are still up. So I'm, I'm just hoping that some quiet little agreement hasn't been made with the neighborhood. No offense to the people in that neighborhood, but that racist name needs to come down. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clark. Ms. Barker?
Good afternoon and counsel Diane Barker. Downtown Phoenix, and I have just a couple of points. One, what do we do on Mondays? Get out. No matter the climate, or if it's a holiday, we come downtown Phoenix and we walk or run to the Hans Park and come back for free tickets. They've had raffle tickets for the D-backs and the Mercury's, even the Phoenix Symphony, and for script to eat in some of the really lovely emerging restaurants and bars downtown Phoenix. And I get to go to the D-backs game, and I'm, I'm impressed that they've got a better win ratio this year, and so I'm excited about that for Friday, and we got those. No, I didn't personally win it, but I shared the last time with this fellow, so he returned the favor, so, you know, it's all good. And these are things that you can do. I regularly see a couple of people from the city of Phoenix that go there also, and so we're encouraging you to all get out and to try, meet me downtown. And I'd just like to emphasize that Monday, I did travel over to the same meeting expecting to be a participant at the meeting Leonard Clark was going to go to, and I was told that there was no quorum there. And, you know, finally, I see like, some good, I live downtown, I see some things that are really good happening, where people are enjoying coming down to, we have a lot of music downtown. I was out for Motown, and I think most people that were out, you know, around 11 o'clock on a weekday, probably never lived through the Barry Gordy times, but, you know, they were out there enjoying it, and I was thinking, you know, we need to have, because we have a mixed living residents downtown, and I hope it continues that way, Mayor, you know, with seniors and working persons and like this, but some of the seniors, we need to have an earlier dance, you know, for them. And so that's just to keep in mind. And finally, Ed Lebo from the Arts made a spectacular presentation of the streets in Phoenix in the last hundred years, and I could see was sad, because, you know, we used to be gardens, we used to be agriculture, and we had all these trees around the canals. Well, it drastically changed, you know, when we got rid of the mass transit and the cars, and so, you know, he was saying, "Well, it will never, ever be that," but guess what? We can cut down, it raised the temperature 10 degrees by digging all this up and putting asphalt in. Look at what we did at Portland. They have a garden area, and I think they call them paseos, and consider, in these buildings that you leave, enough space for that, and bring the truck in that has the fresh vegetables on it.
Thank you so very much. Now we'll move on to the 24-hour paragraph. Mr. City Clerk?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting, and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances number G6348 and 6362 through 6364, S43868 and 43896 through 43931, and resolutions number 21569 through 21570.
Thank you very much. Now we'll have approval of meeting minutes, items one through eight. Councilwoman Pastore, have you had a chance to review formal meeting minutes, April 5th, 2017?
I move approval, April 5th, 2017.
There's a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Councilwoman Gallego, formal meeting minutes, April 19th, 2017.
Move approval.
There's a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Councilman Waring, have you reviewed formal meeting minutes, May 10th, 2017? The motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Councilman DeCecio, formal meeting minutes, May 31st, 2017.
I have not read the mayor, and I'd like to have their continuance for a week, until the next meeting.
All right. There's a motion to continue, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Councilwoman Williams, formal meeting minutes, June 17th, 2017.
I reviewed them, found them to be correct, and move approval.
There's a motion, there is, there's a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Councilwoman Stark, formal meeting minutes, June 21st, 2017.
Move to approve.
There's a motion, there's a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Councilman Valenzuela, formal meeting minutes, June 28th, 2017.
I move approval.
The motion, there's a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. This Councilman Noakowski, he's not participating at this point, so we can get a continuance on formal meeting minutes for July 6th, 2017. There's a motion for a continuance, there's a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. There are no boards and commissions today. There are members of the community to be sworn in today, is that accurate? Are there anybody here to be sworn in for service on a board or commission? Okay.
I want to repay me.
Zero dollars and zero cents. Our commissions are volunteer efforts. Liquor license applications, items nine through 29, is there a motion on liquor license applications?
Motion to approve items nine through 29, except item 29.
There's a motion, there's a second. Are there any cards in those item? All in favor of the cards? Okay. Any comments by members of the city council on liquor license applications? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next is item 29. Item 29 is the Pink Rhino Cabaret, liquor license application in District 8. Our professional staff is recommending disapproval. So now I'll turn it to our professional staff, Ms. Archibald, and ask for a detailed staff report on this item.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Denise Archibald with the City Clerk Department, and with me is Liz Sujas with the City Prosecutor's Office. This request is for an ownership and location transfer of a liquor license for a topless bar doing business as Pink Rhino. This location is currently licensed for liquor sales with a separate, with a separate Series 6 bar liquor license. In addition to alcohol sales, the applicant has indicated there will be adult live entertainment at this establishment. Adult use is currently not permitted at this location. Staff recommends disapproval of this application based on a police recommendation for disapproval.
All right, that is the staff recommendation. Councilwoman, with your permission, I'll have, there's a couple cards on this item. I'll turn to the members of the public for their testimony.
Please do.
Detective Westfall for the Phoenix Police Department. Did you wish to provide testimony on the item? Please come forward, and then Mary Moore will be, will be next. Detective Westfall, please. Either one.
Either one. Good afternoon, Detective Westfall, Phoenix Police Department. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council, and thank you for the time to allow me to speak on this matter. Mark Cummings and Patrick Zanzuki, through PHZMSCL, have applied for a Series 6 person and location transfer of a second liquor license to the Pink Rhino Cabaret located at 3613 East Van Buren Street. The Police Department recommends disapproval on this application based on the applicant's failure to meet the requirement set forth in ARS 4-203. Under the statute, a liquor license shall only be issued to an applicant who demonstrates a satisfactory showing that they are reliable, capable, and qualified to hold a liquor license. In June of 2016, the council may remember that they recommended denial on an application for the Pink Rhino from these same applicants, based on hidden ownership, liquor license violations at their other locations, and Patrick Zanzuki's history as a convicted felon. In November of 2016, the Arizona State Liquor Board did approve this license. In January of 2017, when it appeared the Pink Rhino had not opened for business, a compliance violation was filed by the Department of Liquor alleging false or misleading information that the licensee had failed to maintain capability, qualification, and reliability, and failure to place the license on inactive status. This case was closed on April 25th by Bob Dorn after Zanzuki provided pictures of dancers holding newspapers up inside the club and sales receipts. This would be the letter that the applicant mailed to City Council saying that this case had been dismissed. What the applicant isn't telling you is that a second case was opened in May after that one was dismissed. Same allegations. In May of 2017, Investigator Williams and I met with Zanzuki and Cummings at the Pink Rhino location. There were several inconsistencies with the sales receipts as to how much drinks were, what was purchased, what was door receipts. The bar was covered in a thick layer of dust, and according to City of Phoenix water records, there had been no water used between November of 2016 and March of 2017. The bar appeared as it did when I was part of the search warrant and closed it back in July of 2015. All licenses to operate were expired at the bar, and during the interview, Mark Cummings made the statement, "We're not even open yet. What do you expect from us?" This is significant because in July of 2017, an informal determination was made by Planning and Development that the non-conforming status of an adult use would not be permitted because it had not been used for more than 180 days. Cummings and Zanzuki have repeatedly stated the Pink Rhino is open for business despite significant information and facts to show the business remains closed. This compliance action is currently with the Arizona Attorney General's Office and is awaiting an administrative law judge hearing. Zanzuki is currently in the process of applying for a license at a different location, Centerfold's Cabaret. You may remember that this license was recommended for denial by City Council and is also awaiting a hearing with the State Liquor Board. There is a Department of Liquor administrative hearing set for highlighter, another club that Zanzuki is involved in for prohibited sex acts and licensee's failure to maintain capability, qualification, and reliability. Based on these facts, the granting of a liquor license for this establishment would not be in the best interest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Detective. Any questions for Detective Westfall at this time? We appreciate your investigation and testimony.
Thank you.
Mary Moore, did you wish to provide testimony today?
Hello, my name is Mary Moore. You probably know me as Vice President of the Linden Park Neighborhood Association, also Vice Chair of the Gateway Reinvent Phoenix Steering Committee, and a board member of the Baltz Community Education Foundation. But today, I am here representing the Van Buren Civic Association and the Sunbeam Neighborhood Association. And, you know, I was here in the spring of 2016 to speak against the liquor license for the Pink Rhino, and we're here in opposition also for this trance, for, for the transfer of a liquor license. You know, I'm very familiar with this area. We have two elementary schools on 36th Street, just north of Van Buren, including the Crockett Elementary School, which is in the Baltz Elementary School District, and just down, just, just very, not too far down the street on Van Buren is the U-Mom. So I just wanted to say that, that, you know, this is not a good fit or in the best interest for the area or the community, and we would hope that you would deny this. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mary. It's great to see you, by the way.
Oh, it's great to be here.
All right, there are no other cards to provide testimony on this item. Is anyone else here wishing to provide testimony on item number 29, the proposed liquor license for Pink Rhino? All right, Councilwoman Gallego, now I'll turn it over to you.
Wonderful. Thank you to our Detective Westfall and our Police Department for their work on this issue. It's been a lot of research that went into this recommendation, and I will be supporting our Police Department. I recommend, I move disapproval of item 29 based on the Police Department's recommendation with concerns for the applicant's capability, qualifications, and reliability to hold and control a liquor license. The applicant's had a history of liquor law violations and have provided conflicting, false, misleading information in connection with this liquor license application. Granting this license would not be in the best interest of the community.
We have a motion for disapproval. We have a second. Any comments by members of the council on that motion? Roll call. DeCecio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, so the motion for disapproval passed unanimously. All right, next item on the agenda is ordinances, resolutions, new business, and planning and zoning. Vice Mayor, do we have an omnibus motion on those items?
Yes. Motion to approve items 30 dash, or 30 through 87.2, except the following. Items 31, 34, 36, 43, 51, 53, 56, 57, 61, 63, 73, 75, 84, and 87. Item 44 has been continued to October 4th, 2017, and excluding, excluding these items for public comment, but I already put a minute.
Okay, so that is the omnibus motion, which includes items to be heard separately to get public comment. There has been a second by Councilwoman Williams. Any comments or questions by members of this council? Roll call. DeCecio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. Next item, is it 31 is the next item? Item 31 is next. Is there a motion on 31, Vice Mayor?
Move item 31.
There is a motion, there is a second. Are there any cards on item 31? Any comments by members of the city council? Roll call. DeCecio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, that item passes 7-1, 8-1. Next item is 30, is 34 an item, or no?
Item 34.
34. Is there a motion on 34?
Move item 34.
Okay.
There's a motion, there is a second. Any cards? Any comments or questions by members of this council? Roll call. DeCecio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, that passes 8-1. 36 is next. Is there a motion on 36? This is to continue our shopping cart retrieval program?
Move approval.
Second.
There's a motion, there is a second. Are there any cards in this item? Any comments or questions by members of this council? Councilman Waring, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So I use this program a lot. The idea is to clean up shopping carts, which can be the precursor for, to use an implied word, I guess, blight, same with graffiti and so forth. So the city is forward-thinking in having this, this program. Unfortunately, I don't think that they've been meeting their mark. I talked with Chris Hallett about this, Ed. You know, he knows I'm a frequent caller. My office is a frequent caller, not just in my district, but whenever I see the shopping carts around town, which is what we want from citizens, but I have found, I mean, there were literally one time where weeds growing around a cart that we'd called in several times, and, you know, that's been a little bit frustrating. So, so while I agree with the program, I am going to vote no on this today, but really, I'm hoping we just, we make a well-meaning program better. I do think if, you know, citizens call and nothing happens, that, that does not send a good signal, or if it takes too long. So, and I think they've been missing their mark, so I'm going to vote no.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, do you know, are there performance metrics on this agreement with Arizona Cart Services?
Mayor, I'm assuming there are, but the ones who would know that best would be Chris Hallett from the Neighborhood Services Department, and I'll ask him to respond.
Mr. Hallett, you heard Mr. Councilman Waring suggest that the program isn't successful. Any thoughts on that?
Mayor, can I just say one thing first?
Please, of course.
So I'm only speaking, I did not pull numbers, it's just my own personal experience with, with several dozen, probably, shopping carts. Some of them got picked up right away, but quite a few of them didn't, as we've discussed before.
All right. Anecdotally, he's not happy with the program, but what are, do we have performance metrics?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, yes, we do receive and are required to from the vendor to provide performance metrics. Just a case in point for August, the contract requires them to be responded within two business days. They reported for the month of August that they were at 2.8 days, that they have a running clock from the time they get this, from an arrow, so it includes weekends. So we're suspecting, overall, they may be close to the two days. We could look geographically speaking if it has a delay in certain parts of town than others, but we're going to look closer at that as a result of our prior discussion and hone in on that metric on the new contract.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments or questions by members of this council? Please, Vice Mayor.
Question on the metrics. How do you, I guess, monitor the metrics? Because they're the ones who are, the contractor is the one who's going and doing that. Do you monitor it by the call? And then from when the call starts, do they report back to say, "We've picked it up"? Or how is it monitored?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastore, they self-report monthly. They're required to provide reports. They provide logs for every call that they receive when they pick them up. There are some summary reports. We do do some QC follow-up out in the field, but we certainly, all this is tracked by the vendor and supplied to staff overseeing the program, and it is monitored on a regular basis. We can certainly provide some background reporting to the council if they'd like to see it from the history.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Pastore, hearing this conversation, I'm going to do two things. I'll ask our Budget and Research Department to do a management review, I'm also, I will also ask our city auditor to audit the contract, which is our right under our contracts, and work with the Neighborhood Services Department, as Mr. Hallett has noted.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions noting the city manager's actions as a result of this discussion? Roll call. DeCecio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, that item passes 8 to 1 with additional information from our city manager. Next on the agenda is item 43. City Clerk needs to read the title on item 43, so please do so.
Item 43, ordinance G6348, an ordinance amending residential parking permit ordinance, Phoenix City Code, Section 36-157.3, by adding a new area 29.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any cards on item 43? Vice Mayor, it's in your district. How would you like to proceed?
I would like a staff report on this.
We get a staff report on item 43.
Mayor and Vice Mayor and City Council members, today, before you have a request for amending the city code, as was mentioned, residents in this proposed area reported parking of non-resident vehicles impacting the neighborhood. We did receive a request for that, and looking at the parking area, back in, in March of 11th of 2017, we did have a, a public meeting with, in collaboration with Police Department, Neighborhood Services Department, and talked to about 30 residents. We had, talked, sent out notification to about 200 people, 200 households. Subsequent to that, we did a parking study to identify if there was intruder parking was intruder parking in the area. The study did conclude that we did have 75 of the available, 75% of the available parking had 25% of intruder parking in the area. So this this amendment to the city code would require basically creating a parking area. And so depicted up in the on the map, the that you see up here in the presentation, the area is basically covered from Seventh Street, sorry, Seventh Street to Third Street to the west, and then from the north side, Weldon Avenue, down to Mulberry Street on the bottom. So this would only require, this would only create a parking permit area, but would not create restrictions. Subsequent to that, the area could create block face zones for restrictions, and people would have to, if they chose chose to do that, they would have to get 70% of that block face on that zone to create a residential parking permit area.
Okay. I think there's confusion in the neighborhood regarding the residential parking permit ordinance. And the confusion is people did sign a petition that made the requirement of 75% agreed for the position of doing a parking permit ordinance. However, that does not require the neighborhood, then it doesn't automatically impose parking permits.
Mayor and Vice Mayor, exactly. It doesn't impose a parking zone restriction. It only creates an area of the of the intrusion that we've already analyzed. So it doesn't create a restriction.
So by creating the area, what is the next step?
The next step would be, Mayor and Vice Mayor, the next step would be is individually block faces, if they wanted to do a restriction for that one block face, they would require, we would require a petition of 70%. And if we, if they got that, that 70% for that block face, and then we would would put in a restriction for that parking. For example, if we saw along one of the streets, interior streets there, if one block face would would want to have that, 70% of that block from, let's say, from Seventh Street to Fifth Street on the north face block, they could provide that and basically get 70%. If they get 70% approval, then we would impose a residential parking restriction.
And that could be on the north side?
Could be on the north, yes, ma'am.
So if if, say, from Seventh to Fifth, the north side of that street, I'll just name a name, Mulberry, the north side of that chooses chooses to do a petition and they get 75, then the north side would get permit parking?
Yes.
Okay. Because I think there's a lot of confusion. Some people want it, some people don't. And by creating a district, they think it's automatically happening. And so that's why I'm asking for some clarity. So once permit parking, say they get 75%, what then happens? What does the neighborhood, what's the third step?
Mayor and Vice Mayor, so the next step, we would go out, if they get the 70% of the face, block face of the residents, we would go ahead and place the signs for that one side of the street, for example. And then also, if they want to purchase a permanent, they have up to four permanent restriction parking permits, as well as three visitor parking permits. They they choose not to buy it, or they can choose to buy it. The only issue would be is that if they don't choose to buy it, they would not be able to park along that that block face, either the north side or wherever that section that they have requested restriction parking.
Okay, so I'm going to ask a question, and this one, if I have a party, about 25 guests coming, and it's permit parking on the north side, and do I have to get, 25 cars wouldn't fit there, so I'm just going to say 10, then parking permits, or then my guests to be able to come to my party, or what happens?
Mayor and Vice Mayor, based on, just based on the the location of the block face, let's say from from Seventh to Fifth Street, if that's only the area that has the permit parking restrictions, you would only have four permanent and three visitors. So beyond that, let's say there's nothing else in the area, technically, it's public parking, you can still park there. So the the whole area would not have the restriction.
Other than the north side?
Other than that one specific block face restriction.
Okay. Okay, so then, I'm assuming then, yes, I would have to go and ask my neighbors for their their guests' permit parking, if if that was the case?
Mayor and Vice Mayor, specifically for that only, that zone of that block face, yes.
Right.
Mayor and Vice Mayor, I just was mentioning that there is a process where we could cover the the permit, the the signs, and we could have temporary parking in the area, if that's the specific area that we have restrictions on.
Okay. So because of all the questions and the ambiguity, but yet knowing that the residential parking permit ordinance is just setting up that district, it is up to the neighborhood then to determine if they want to move forward in getting permit parking, and with that, they would have to get 70, 75% of signatures or owners of that area. I am going to recommend or move the motion of yes, designate this as a district, a permanent district, with knowing the fact that the neighborhood will have to continue on in in having discussions regarding their permit parking.
Mayor and Vice Mayor, just a clarification on the moving forward with a potential zone, parking restriction zone, that would only require 70%.
Okay, 70, okay, 70%, but it's just requiring, this is now requiring the zone. This is the district.
Mayor and Vice Mayor, yes, it would create a district, and then individually block faces, they would have to come back with 70% of a petition approving a residential restriction parking for that area.
And I understand the area very well, and I understand the impact that it's happening because it's right on Seventh Street in Osborne, where Taco Gill, Buffalo Exchange, and Starbucks. And I understand, and and north of that, we also have the coffee shop and other other businesses that are impacting the neighborhood. So I'm agreeing with the petition and saying, yes, develop a zone, and then it's then it's up to the community and the neighborhood to determine how they want to move forward and that dialogue. So that's my motion.
All right, so the motion is in favor of item number 43. Is there a second? Motion and a second. Any additional comments or questions by members of the city council? This is just the first step in a longer process. There was a motion and a second. Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item 51, is that right? Is there a motion on item 51?
Move approval of item 51.
The motion and second of in favor of item 51, Ms. Diane Barker, you should write testimony on item 51.
Yes. Okay, I handed it in some papers on this issue, and I guess my question basically is, is that the $2 million for this particular contract came out of a $20 million standing contract. And I just wanted to see if, in fact, Greta wanted to speak on that, but she called me and told me she's ill. So I wanted to find out if, in fact, that is legitimate, and if it is legitimate, is it really ethical?
All right, thank you very much. So, Mr. City Manager, if you could respond to that, look right into that camera, because I'm sure Greta is watching from home. You could speak directly to her.
Mayor, council members, and Ms. Rogers, this item is ethical, in that we are paying a contractor for work performed, and it's legal in that it is according to a contract and subject to council approval. Thank you.
Where's the money coming from?
Mayor, the the money comes from the library budget originally, but we do have insurance payments that will reimburse us for this expense.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments or questions by members of this council? There is a motion. There is a second. Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes unanimously. Next item is item 53. Is there a motion on 53?
I move item 53.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any cards on item? Any comments by members of our city council? Roll call.
DeCecio.
No.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that passes seven to two. Next item is item 56 concerning Phoenix Sister Cities. Is there a motion on 56?
Move item 56.
There's a motion and a second. Any cards on that item? Would any members of the council like to comment on this item? Councilwoman Williams, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I am very appreciative of Phoenix Sister Cities. They have won national awards, I think, for the last 20 years, as the best in the nation. The cultural exchange with students from our sister cities has been a resounding success, and it is continuing to grow, and I look forward to what's going to happen in the future. I know that we are losing our longtime director. She is going to retire on us. I don't know how she can do that. But she has done a terrific job, so I just want to thank her and know that this important program is going to continue, because I think you not only do all the sister city events, and we've had some of those, I think, for over 30 years, if I recall right, but you also serve as the protocol officer for the city of Phoenix. And when the mayor or council has people from other countries, we greatly appreciate your efforts to educate us, so we don't insult anybody. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Those wonderful comments of Paula. I know we'll have a time in the future as well to pay proper honor to her and her outstanding career. Any other comments by members of this council? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Gallego. Gallego. Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes seven to one. Councilwoman Gallego, are you still on the phone? All right, we'll keep moving forward. Next item is item 61, is that right? 57, I apologize. Is there a motion on 57? Or anybody like to make a motion on 57?
Move approval on item 57.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. I have just a couple cards, one in favor wishing to speak, a few in favor not wishing to speak, and then one opposed. Ms. Jennifer Hackett, did you want to provide testimony in favor of this item? The motion is in favor of item 57. No, thank you, okay. And then also in favor not wishing to speak, Matthew Warner, Corey Kennedy, Terry Warren, and then Mr. Leonard Clark. Did you should write testimony on 57. If you want to speak after he does, depending on what he says, you certainly can as well. Mr. Clark, good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Leonard Clark, and as you all know, I'm a longtime opponent of corporate charter schools, so-called not-for-profit corporate charter schools, because as we all know, many founders get around that with the shell or, you know, like, set up corporation, they set up a for-profit management agency. Mr. Montini of the Arizona Republic just finished writing an excellent column on September 8th, and it's entitled, "Montini: Charter Schools Are Racked With Abuse But Will Ignore It." The people we elect to the state legislature are supposed to guard our tax money, spend it wisely, oversee those who receive it, and protect us from those who would mismanage the funds, or worse, hoard the cash for themselves. And when lawmakers do just the opposite, as they do with charter schools, we do nothing. We've known for years that the charter school system in Arizona is a scam and is a ripoff, little or no accountability, little or no oversight, little or no transparency. Lawmakers hand over a billion dollars a year that charter school operators pretty much get to put anywhere they want, including their own pockets. This fact is reinforced in spades in a new report by the Grand Canyon Institute. The centrist think tank spent the past several years combing through records, culling information, and setting the abuse down on the paper in a way that we absolutely positively should not ignore, but we still do. Now, I ask you, as our hard-working parents in Phoenix Union High School District and in the Osborne School District are knocking on tens of thousands of doors, pleading for this conservative legislature that makes us one of the lowest-funded education systems in the country, because the last legislative session, the governor made sure to take care of the universities and colleges, our children in K-8 and public education are one of the lowest-funded. And as they are out there knocking on doors for a bond override, our charter school, and nothing personal to you, there are good people in the corporate charter schools, they come to you, nine members, and they get $30 million? I've been here for almost four or five years, and almost not once have you ever voted against it. I can, I know my conservative friends, they love this. But Democrats, Democrats who go out and say they support public education, $1 billion, Mayor Stanton, $1 billion, Laura Pastor, $1 billion, Daniel Valenzuela, Kate Gallego, Deborah Stark, oh, you can go out and say you support public education. Yes, right. You'll all vote unanimously for this. Shame on you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clark. All right, we have the motion in favor of the item. It's a second. Any comments by members of our city council? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes unanimously. Next item is item 61. Item 61. Ah, there a motion on 61?
Can I move 61 and 63?
You may.
Together. I believe we have two cards from Leonard Clark.
Okay, so motion in favor of 61 and 63. Leonard Clark, you should write testimony on 61 and 63. Go ahead and do them together.
Mayor, as a citizen, I would wish, Mayor Stanton, as a citizen, born in this city, September 22nd, 1964, you put on the agenda two separate items, and I wish to speak on them both, because I have two different things to speak, one being not all the same as following the other.
I'll give you two minutes on each item, so a total of four minutes.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Now, first of all, I have some angry-looking law enforcement standing around me, and I don't appreciate it. If you want to intimidate me like this is Venezuela, Venezuela, I did not go to Iraq. I did not go to Iraq and come back so that I, I'm going to be cowed or intimidated. You can stare me down all you want. That's not going to work. That might work in Venezuela or in Putin's Russia, but it will not work here. So you can look quizzically at me, but the people know. So let's just go on here. 61, $875,000 for the alcohol, tobacco, and firearms agency. Now, people say, Mr. Clark, you know, we got to fight the bad guys. I totally agree. But, you know, I'm a tree-hugging liberal, even my, I'm starting to agree with my libertarian friends and Rand Paul. We are now, our police, every time I come to this meeting, tens of millions of dollars from the federal government, including Homeland Security, our Phoenix law enforcement are becoming nothing but a subsidiary wholly owned by Homeland Security, because 9/11, now the Patriot Act, we have no accountability. So now we have officers who essentially will be working full-time for the federal government. Now, I'm not even a conservative. I'm in a very tough position here. I'm not a libertarian. I'm a tree-hugging liberal. Why are you making me do this? We should not be getting millions and millions of dollars. You can tell me, oh, Mr. Clark, there's no catch from the federal government, when Donald Trump hands out the money, and Phoenix law enforcement, who likes to shoot people with rubber bullets and use tear gas, want to get $875,000 on their failed drug drug war to throw my fellow Americans in jail at that gulag across the street for using recreational marijuana? Something is very wrong. Something is wrong in Denmark. Oh, sorry, something is wrong in the city of Phoenix. Thank you.
Thank you very much. 63, please, go ahead.
63. DEA, 400, okay, on the Drug Enforcement Agency, pretty much everything I said before, except for I am concerned. In the news today, we are talking about having to send law enforcement personnel, which I totally agree with, in U.S. News and Report, out to search for a young lady's body at the landfill. All these police you're sending off to work in these failed wars on drugs, drugs, and all the, and Homeland Security spying on its citizens? I want them out there to be searching for that. I want this young lady's body in the landfill. I want our officers actually going for the bad guys, you know, instead of harassing people using marijuana and drugs. You know what? Why don't get them in rehabilitation programs instead of your private prisons? You know, we just spent $450,000 on the Trump, the Trump rally. You know, why don't you ask Donald Trump to send some money to pay for that, Mayor Stanton? We had to use our tax dollars for that. So I'm sorry if you don't like the truth. I'm an American citizen, and I am not going to be intimidated. You need to stop taking so much money from the federal government. I never thought I would say that as a big-time, big-government liberal tree hugger. I personally, you know, you are nice people personally. I hate nobody. We, I'm trying to save this system. The people are not being listened to. They may be only 15 or 20%, but if you ignore them, you're helping to bring down our republic, our constitutional democratic republic. We are the fifth-largest city, and what we do sets the trend. Thank you so much, and my fellow veterans for letting me speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leonard Clark. Please, there's a motion in favor of 61 and 63. There is a second. Any additional comments by members of the council? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, those items pass unanimously. Next item is 73. Is there a motion on 73?
Move item 73.
There's a motion. There is a second. Are there any cards on 73? Any comments by members of this council? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes seven-one, eight-one. All right, next item on the agenda is item 75. Are there any cards on 75? Councilman DeCecio, do you want to make a motion on 75? This is the formation of Madison Grove's Irrigation Water Delivery District.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion of approval.
Okay, so in favor, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second in favor of the formation of Madison Grove's Irrigation Water Delivery District. Are there any cards on that item? Any comments or questions by members of this council? Any comments or questions by members of this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so the item passes seven to one, eight to one, I apologize, eight to one. Next item, we're now on planning and zoning agenda, is a study of planning and development fee. I'll now turn to the Vice Mayor, if we want a short presentation on this, or just a motion on eighty-four?
Uh, presentation, please.
Mr. Alan Stevenson, please, what are you asking for on item eighty-four?
Mayor, members of council, item eighty-four is a request to enter into a contract for a planning and development fee study with MGT of America Consultants. They were selected after an RFP process and recommended for approval by the Deputy Finance Director as well as myself. The aggregate value of the contract is not to exceed three-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars over a four-year period. This consultant will allow us to study all of our fees throughout the Planning and Development Department, our zoning fees, site plans, civil review fees, it's what we do on a basis so that we can make sure we are competitive with our fees and that we are recovering all the costs that we need to for the development fund as projects come through the permitting system. With that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Other questions for, for our planning director, Councilwoman Stark?
Just a couple, so first, that doesn't include impact fees?
No, Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, that does not include impact fees.
Okay, and the study may increase fees, it could decrease fees, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And we, once we have the report from the consultant, we will come back and share that with you, so you can see where those are, where, for example, it may be that we're under-recovering in the civil review section for plans related to grading of drainage, but we're over-recovering for site plan reviews, and so we come back and adjust those fees to be commiserate with what the actual work time it takes staff to do on those products, those various permits.
Excellent. Any other questions for Mr. Stevenson? Is there a motion on eighty-four?
Move eighty, item eighty-four.
We have a motion and a second, any comments on eighty-four? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item passes eight to one. Next item on the agenda is item number eighty-seven. Item eighty-seven concerns city implementation of a state statute that was passed as it relates to three-quarter votes on planning and zoning matters before this city council. So we're going to hear a staff report on it, hold a public hearing, see if any members of the public have any testimony on this item, and then we'll see if there is a motion on this item thereafter. Maybe as part of the staff report, we can, you know, subtly indicate what's being proposed, but sort of how we got here. So those of us who have been around a while are used to our three-quarter vote criteria where it, when there are planning zoning cases, if nearby neighbors, you know, are not supportive of an item, they, they have the right to ask for a three-quarter vote, and that was changed at the state legislature last year. So I'll let Mr. Stevenson explain it, and obviously every council member can speak for themselves on the underlying item. Mr. Stevenson.
Mayor, members of council, as you stated, this is a request for a tax amendment to the zoning ordinance to comply with changes to Arizona revised statutes regarding the three-quarter vote process for the mayor and council to approve a change of zoning. This was passed down the legislature as House Bill twenty-one sixteen. The proposed language is exactly mirrors the state statute language. It was approved by the Planning Commission as well as the Downtown Aviation Economy Innovation Subcommittee. The proposed language makes it considerably more difficult to trigger a three-quarter vote. If the council wants, I do have some maps that can show exactly what that looks like, or I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, we'll hold the public hearing, and then afterwards, then members of council can ask those questions of you. So now I'll open up the public hearing on item number eighty-seven. Public hearing is open, are there any cards on item eighty-seven? Is anyone here in the public wishing to speak on item number eighty-seven, as it relates to implementation of a state statute for when it requires a three-quarter vote before the city council on planning and zoning matters, going once, going twice? Our public hearing is now closed. Now it turns to members of the, of the council. Obviously, the recommendation by the Planning Commission and the Downtown Aviation Economy and Innovation Subcommittee does not mean that they support what was done at the state legislature, just that they acknowledge that it is legally required that we implement the law that was passed out of the state legislature. I really feel that it's unfortunate what occurred at state legislature, to make it significantly harder for neighborhood voices to be heard here at the city council. The previous three-quarter vote criteria was not abused in any regard here, at least here at the Phoenix City Council. It, it did make for sometimes tougher zoning cases, but that's the, that's what should happen under circumstances where the next-door neighbors are not supportive of a change that's going to affect their quality of life. So I was supportive of the previous way we did it, was not supportive of the state statute, but I do understand that the statute did pass, we should implement it for legal reasons here, and then go back out to the legislature and try to have a more informed discussion out in the open, not a last-minute change, striker-type amendment where you don't really have an open exchange, so that the community groups most affected could really come out and have their testimony heard. Any other comments or questions by members of the council? All right, is there a motion on item eighty-seven? And again, a motion doesn't mean you actually in favor of the changes, just acknowledgement that we are legally required to implement those changes.[1727.42]